Do I understand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Brennan.
Honorable Mayor Ron Schaver.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Marler.
Here.
Christine Casto.
Here.
Allison Howe.
Present.
Clint Anderson.
He's excused this evening.
Lisa Northrup.
Here.
Kevin Lindor.
He's also excused.
Thank you.
We're gonna shuffle up just a little bit. We have, I'm gonna put, uh, public participation and comments up front, so we can have something. I will let it be known, we can't make it, take any action. This is just an informative part, and we'll also have one towards the end, so... Mr. Johnson and Lindsey, if you'd like to...
Well, thank you, guys. We just wanted to come in quickly and let you know all the Christmas capital stuff that's coming up. Um, starts on Saturday with the movie in Santa House. If you haven't noticed, Santa's House is already downtown and stuff, but that's coming up quickly. Um, not a whole lot of change. Snowzilla will be here December 2nd. Um, if you want to volunteer, I'm looking at you guys. Lisa's already volunteered, so we always look for help. Um, we did finally confirm, just a couple of days ago, we will have some trees in the, in the park down there that we'll decorate. They're gonna be a little smaller, and they're gonna actually be live, so when we're done, we're gonna donate them to the city, so you guys can figure out what you're gonna do with them. If you want them. And then, uh, other than that, I don't think we've had a whole lot of changes, but mostly, I just wanted to come in and thank you guys for all the staff that you guys allow us to, to use a little bit. Uh, it's not as, it's not as intensive, I guess, as when we have Bob Stock going on, but we get a lot of help from you guys, and we appreciate it. We appreciate the fact that we get the street shut down for a whole month, so that's pretty cool, so I know there's no action to be taken, but if there was, I would vote to say, "Let's do it again next year." Any questions for us?
No, looks like a pretty...
If you haven't, uh, if you haven't dusted off your old family recipe in the last few years, um, Jeff is kinda feeling like he's gonna come back and defend his crown from a few years ago, I know, but Jason's a defending champ. And, uh, so we've got a little competition going on here. We'd love to have more chili cooks, but this year Rotary Club's doing that on December 2nd, and, uh, well, it's expanded a little bit. We're also doing soups. It won't be inside the businesses, it'll be down on Beaver or in the park or somewhere down there, so we'll get the heaters and try to keep it warm, or air conditioners to keep it cool, depends on the weather.
Or if it's a blizzard, we're going into the museum.
Yeah. But we're not stopping.
So are the soups and the chili in the same category?
Uh, no, actually, that's not. Um, we're actually, Rotary Club's giving away money this year. Um, there'll be a hundred dollars for judges, the judges' choice, which, the Honorable Mayor, we'd love to have you be one of our judges.
Book me.
Done. And then we have, uh, fifty dollars for the people's choice, and that's just them voting. So this year's gonna be different, where we'll have judges, and then we'll have, so that'll be a hundred, fifty for the people's choice, and then twenty-five for the best soup, and twenty-five for the best chili. But anyway, so it's a little bit different. We got sponsors this year, we're helping, having other people sell us tickets, so we're really hoping that, as a Rotary Club, that we'll get a whole lot more people downtown and just a whole lot more activity and stuff like that, so... It's go, it's gone well, the whole event, and, and it stays busy. We, again, the free movies every Saturday, Snowzilla. Uh, we, we have a little less time this year than we've had in the past. It's a full two weeks, three Saturdays. Um, so it's a little less time than we've had it before, but that's not all bad, 'cause I almost kill my staff when we do this, so it'll, it'll be a little less time for them, but... And then, uh, with the Christmas falling on a Monday, it made it a little awkward. We didn't want to do too many things right there towards the, the, on the 23rd, so we do have a free movie in Santa House and stuff, but we're not having an event that day. And I know the city's got their event on the 19th, they're doing, uh, golf in the park again, and then, uh, we'll do our ice sculpting. We're doing the 19th, aren't we? You guys are do, or...
The 9th, I think.
Let me look, I've got it on...
We're the 9th.
Yeah, we do the 16th, you guys do the 9th.
Yep.
And we'll do our ice sculpting again, and we just found out today, we got a, a sponsor for our ice sculpting, so there'll be cash prizes there, too. So if you've got any sculpting skills, you're welcome to join us. But if you don't have any questions, thank you guys for what you do for us, and, uh, come out and enjoy our Christmas capital.
We will, thanks so much.
Thank you.
I'd only add that, uh, you know, we are the Christmas capital of the plains. Started this six years ago. It's been, uh, extremely well-received by everybody that comes to Fort Morgan. Uh, everybody else wishes they could do it as good, and without our partners on the private side, I don't think this, uh, would be anything close to what it is, so thanks a lot. We appreciate it.
And thank you for getting it going. You started all this.
Well, it's fun for us, but it gives us something to do in the winter.
It's taken off, and thanks.
No problem.
Yep, good night.
So on the agenda, we have a presentation, an update on the Airport Master Plan. Mr. Glameyer, Reynolds, Smith, and Hill reps.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Thank you very much. Uh, we have with us tonight some honored guests to present our Airport Master Plan. We've been working hard on this. Uh, this process started well before me, um, with RSNH, and so they're here tonight to kinda present the final draft, right before this heads to the FAA for final approval and, and final adoption, so I will turn it over to Peter Mayman. He's, uh, with RSNH, and he can introduce the rest to his team, so...
Thanks. My name's Peter Mayman. Um, I was the project manager for this project, and in the, uh, with me tonight is Michael Becker, and he's the, uh, project director, and lead planner Stephen Deronowski. Uh, these fellows were, um, a big part of this plan. We'll do it manually. So tonight, I'm gonna give you a brief overview of the master plan. I'm gonna tell you about what the master plan is, and kinda give you, uh, the parts and pieces of that, and we'll go into the, the project itself, each component, and then, uh, some other study items that were part of this plan, um, in the study, and then, uh, the final items that we're wrapping up right now. So what is an Airport Master Plan? It's, uh, it provides a few things. The FAA calls it a comprehensive study of an airport, and usually, that usually describes the short and medium and long-term development plans to meet future aviation demand. Um, but what it does is gives a blueprint for the airport for the future. Um, you get a graphical depiction of that blueprint for the future, um, and a schedule of implementation for future development. So why do we do an Airport Master Plan? Well, there's a few reasons. Uh, one, FAA practices, uh, include that FAA typically has a master plan completed for an airport at the size of Fort Morgan every ten years or so. Um, there's laws and regulations that, um, play into it, too. There's thirty-nine federal grant assurances, because the airport takes federal money. Uh, the airport has grant assurance tied to that federal money, and part of that's keeping your airport layout plan up to date, and, um, and that triggers the need to update their, uh, airport layout plan, which was done as part of the study. And finally, uh, there was a new and enhanced runway completed, and so FAA was pretty anxious to get a new study completed after that, to, um, detail the next twenty years of, uh, potential development that this airport, uh, would be needing, um, as a result of that new runway. And who funds the master plan? Well, FAA takes the brunt of it. They pay ninety percent of it, um, and then C.D. Aeronautics and the state is a fantastic partner, um, for aviation in the state, and they do a five percent match on this project, and then the city of Fort Morgan paid the other five percent. So when we got into this project, we had, uh, some focus areas that we were gonna look at, and these included, um, the ultimate runway needs, uh, including runway length requirements, um, utility requirements, and the, and all the hangar developments, and, and understanding what utilities are in place now, and what will be needed to spur development in the future, uh, land use and zoning, management procedures and, uh, practices such as minimum standards and, um, uh, development guidelines, and then finally, airfield design deficiencies, um, which is, uh, relates to what FAA requires today, 'cause sometimes standards change over the years, that what FAA requires today as far as design standards go. So I'll walk you through the master planning project, um, and look at each component. So, uh, this is boiled down, there's a lot more detail that can go into each one of these components, but overall, this explains the gist of it. Um, the first phase of the master plan was pre-planning, and that's where we actually do our scoping, and we figure out what project focus areas we want to do in this master plan. Then we get into the investigation phase, which is the, includes the inventory and all existing conditions, then we do a forecast, then from the forecast, we can tell what, uh, requirements we may need that are not present at the airport today to satisfy any future demand that we see. Um, and then, finally, in the solutions phase, we figure out how to meet that demand. So if the airport doesn't have a facility, or the facility's undersized, um, let's figure out a few different alternatives to be able to meet that, that demand. We figure out a good alternative for anything that we bring into the alternatives process, and then we bring that into the final phase, the implementation phase, which includes, uh, developing a facilities implementation plan, which is basically figuring out how to pay for and phase development over the next twenty years. And that also all goes into that graphical depiction I talked about, which is the airport layout plan. So how did all that boil down into the schedule for this project? Uh, that's, as you can see right here. So we kicked off this master plan in October of 2016. We started with the, uh, inventory of existing conditions, demand forecast, uh, facility requirements, alternatives, facilities implementation. We're right here, so we are, um, about, uh, ninety percent through with our, um, facilities implementation, um, analysis, and we'll be wrapping up that document in December, and then that goes into final, um, documentation. Um, and also, you can see on here, we had three MPAC meetings, the Master Plan Advisory Committee. Uh, through this process, we got input, we worked through, um, each one of these, uh, phases together, and took input back, and that's what developed this plan. So I'll, let's get into the actual project itself, and I'll go through what we did for each one of these components. So we started with existing conditions, and that's fairly simple. We need to go in and inventory exactly what we have at the airport today, including the airfield system, landside facilities, uh, navigational aids, that's what, nav aids, the hangars, how many, what size, the apron, how much size apron that you have currently, what kind of fuel storage do you have, and, um, the utility infrastructure that's in place today. So then we, after we do the existing conditions, excuse me, we develop a forecast. And so how do we do that? We look at the historical forecasts that have been made. Uh, back in 2003, you had a airport, um, uh, layout plan, airport layout plan update, which provided partly a forecast of aviation demand. And we also look at current and forecasted socioeconomic data. Uh, in this study, we use Woods and Pool data, which, uh, looks at nationwide and, um, data for the next fifty years. And then we did a service area analysis, and that's actually the image that you're seeing right here. We looked at what a thirty-mile, or a thirty-minute drive time distance is from the airport, because what drives aviation demand is usually typically correlated with population. So within the thirty-minute drive time, we can see that Fort Morgan's the largest, the city of Fort Morgan is, is the largest population center near the airport, and, uh, you're just outside of Akron at that range, um, and what this helps us with is determining a forecast of, of demand going forward. So the conclusion of that plan came out with two really important figures. One is what we expect based aircraft, or the potential, um, demand for based aircraft, which are aircraft that are stored at the airport, and then aircraft operations. For a sized airport that, um, as such as Fort Morgan, aircraft operations, um, usually are related, or are related directly to capacity, and at this level, there's no capacity issue. That means that the primary runway can take the amount of aircraft operations that we're predicting in the future, no problem. Um, but based aircraft gives you a good gauge of how much uh, hangar construction may be needed in the future, and, uh, how much future activity would be related to that. So, um, you can see, uh, when we did an inventory, we calculate, or we, um, the FBO was able to give us the exact amount of F, uh, based aircraft that were present today, and that's that thirty-two, and based off of the, um, forecast parameters and socioeconomic data, we were, um, the analysis showed us that we were gonna go up to about forty-one based aircraft at the end of the planning period. So we bring that information into the facility requirements, and, uh, this slide right here shows what we found had a deficiency, which was in red with the upside-down triangle, um, what was, could be improved, which is the, uh, yellowish-orange box, and then what we found was sufficient through the entire twenty years. We're looking at a twenty-year time horizon here, and, um, some of these are just deficiencies maybe related to design deficiency, or, uh, for instance, airspace protection. Um, there's no, right now, uh, the city, or the, I'm sorry, the, Morgan County does not have any zoning, um, requirements or an airport overlay in place, and it's recommended that that should, um, uh, be implemented. And that was one of the other side studies that we did, and I'll talk about that at the end of the presentation, but, um, so those, all those reds are just areas where they need, they don't exist, such as the snow removal equipment building, or the apron area, which is a little undersized. Um, and then the utilities, we found a potential for, uh, utility upgrades. So three of those items were brought into the alternatives analysis, and this is where we actually started looking at ways that we could fix these deficiencies. And so I'll talk about the runway protection zones, the runway length, and the apron area for each one of the alternatives that we, uh, looked at in the study. So here you can see, these are the three that we looked at. Um, runway eight-two-six was examined for its length and for the safety areas, which are deficient. All these pieces in red are areas that are outs, that don't meet FAA standard. And in this instance, for both runway eight-two-six and runway one-seven-three-five, um, the red indicates areas that are outside the airport property boundary, and so they're not controlled by, uh, the airport, and, um, they're either safety areas, or the hatched area here is a protection, a runway protection area, and FAA wants to make sure that those are somehow controlled by the airport, so that obstructions, such as even a vehicle or something parked out there, doesn't happen, it's controlled by the airport. Um, the apron area was simple, it was just undersized. Um, partially is due to the, uh, circulation space needed just on the apron. You don't have a whole lot of places, uh, to park larger aircraft and can get congested. So we looked at ways to solve each one of these deficiencies. When we go into an evaluation, we look at, we, we come up with evaluation parameters that each one of our, our alternatives are judged by, and these are what we used in this study. Um, we wanna make sure that the alternatives meet FAA design standards, that they maximize the operational performance of the airport, that they support both immediate needs and the long-term goals, um, of the airport. That one's, uh, pretty critical, 'cause it's easy to sometimes make, find an alternative that'll meet today's need, but doesn't go well with the future vision. Um, fiscal considerations is critical, because it's also easy to make an alternative that is not fiscally viable, so we wanna make sure that the alternatives that were chosen, um, could actually be implemented, uh, with the budget that Fort Morgan has and the, um, FAA funding that is expected over the next twenty years. And finally, land development strategies, 'cause you wanna make sure that we have the highest and best use for all the land at the, being used at the airport. So with that in mind, we can look at the runway eight-two-six alternatives. Um, the issue again with this one was the runway was found to be a little bit too short. This is the turf runway, so it's the crosswind, um, on this diagram. Um, we looked at, uh, alternative one shows the runway just being shifted, uh, at, at same length, decouples the runway from the primary paved runway, which is a much safer configuration. Um, but as you can see, we're now going outside the airport boundary, so it would require, um, land purchase. Alternative two looks at the very bare minimum. This, um, keeps the runways coupled, though. It was found not to be, uh, doesn't support either today's need or ultimate needs. And, but it does, what it, it does pull the, uh, safety area off the run, um, highways right-of-way, which then would, um, solve at least one problem. And finally, what we, the preferred alternative is basically a, uh, can, um, a better alternative one, in that we shift the runway and look for a long-term future extension that could bring it into the future and provide, um, better flexibility in the future if, if winds change. And as you can see, that runway, or, I'm sorry, that alternative three was brought into the, um, as, to the development plan as the preferred alternative. So the next alternative that we looked at was for runway one-seven-three-five. Um, that's the, another turf runway, uh, that runs along Highway fifty-two. Again, the issue with this was that the runway is so close to the highway that its, uh, safety areas are into the runway, um, are the highways right-of-way, and that the runway protection zones are outside the airport property. So we looked at, uh, what the previous airport layout plan has as the, um, uh, future alternative, and that was a pretty decent alternative, um, although it does require some land acquisition on the north side. It basically shifts the runway inboard slightly, so you have at least one RPZ inside airport property. The other alternative that we examined was moving the entire runway inboard and in within the airport property, but it, um, shortens it up quite a bit. And finally, we looked at alternative three, which was just to decommission it. So to back into, um, some, uh, what the facility requirements found for these runways, uh, helps explain why we chose to decommission this runway, and then that is because the, this runway is not needed within, for, to provide FAA-required wind coverage for the runway systems. So the primary runway, the paved runway, meets the wind coverage for the larger aircraft. It can, as itself. Now, for the smaller aircraft, we don't quite get the ninety-five percent, which is, um, what the FAA wants for wind coverage, for when, uh, during crosswinds, and thus, those aircraft need, uh, relief for crosswind days, and that's why the runway eight-two-six, there we go, there we go, is needed for, for that. But this runway, runway one-seven, one-seven-three-five doesn't actually add any benefit for runway wind coverage, and thus, it's not FAA-eligible for funding. So the FAA won't put any more money into this runway. So to bring this, um, runway inbound, inboard like this, uh, would require full funding by the city of Fort Morgan. And thus, it didn't meet the fiscal considerations, um, uh, evaluation parameter. And finally, this corner, if you do decommission it, is, um, prime area for non-aeronautical use, and so, uh, it, alternative two also did not meet the land development strategies, neither of them did. So if you don't need the runway, what we're saying is, let's decommission it, get better land use, um, opportunity out of that northwest, or northeast quadrant, and, uh, decommission that runway sometime in the future. And finally, we looked at apron expansion alternatives. Um, we examined the north side of the terminal area, uh, is what, or the, the hangar area. Um, that's where the previous airport layout plan, um, showed a lot of future hangar development, is in this north area, um, uh, north of all the hangars. But we also examined in this alternatives analysis, going, developing to the east and developing to the west, and what we easily found was, because all of your utilities, infrastructure, and, um, your FBO are all, uh, already currently developed in this area, it makes a lot of sense to utilize this land to the east and go immediately to the east for future expansion. Then, um, go west. So west didn't quite pair, because, uh, you've got some buildings there that are, they are nearing their, end of their useful life. Um, when they do finally meet the, um, the, their life expectancy, they can be tore down and repurposed, and by then, um, this apron could be, uh, implemented, and then you can go west and kind of infill this area, and, but that would be at the very end of the planning period and, or beyond. But so the preferred alternative for this was to expand to the west, or the east, excuse me. So we brought all this, um, these preferred alternatives into a airport layout plan. So this is the graphical representation of all the work that's been done in this project. It's a multi-sheet, um, development set, or set of, uh, drawings that will convey all this information listed here. You get property information, airfield facilities layout for both, um, the existing, what's on the ground today, your future, and then an ultimate development sheet, you, uh, a close-in examination of the terminal area. Uh, you also get a bunch of airspace drawings. Um, many of these sheets are required. The FAA's got certain, um, expectations for exactly what's on these sheets. There's a checklist that we follow to ensure that everything that the FAA needs is, um, is included, and this, uh, will be submitted to FAA for approval. And finally, I wanted to show you the airport's one-hundred-year vision. This is the ultimate development, and so one thing, when we look about, when we, in our planning analysis, I explained that we don't wanna make short-term, short-sided decisions on alternatives that don't meet, um, a future end goal. So we wanna make sure that we can meet today's needs, and also plan for the future, and the future is unknown. So we wanna make sure that we don't box ourselves in. And this is a one-hundred-year vision of what this airport could someday be, and we say a hundred-year, um, without a real knowing. It could be fifty, it could be a hundred-and-fifty, we have no idea, but, um, it's beyond the planning period, 'cause this is not needed. But what this is showing is that the runway could be extended out to a full seventy-five-hundred feet, which is what the, uh, original runway, when they did the analysis, was, um, showing as a ideal length. Um, this crosswind runway could be extended out to a full, uh, four-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty, uh, feet, or longer if needed, um, and paved, and that's what we're trying to show, is just to, um, preserve land and think about if, if the winds do change in the next fifty years, and your larger aircraft now need a crosswind runway. If, that will become FAA-eligible for, um, implementation, and so we wanna, um, look at the potential expansion there. Your, the north side of your general aviation area here does have a great amount of room for future development, um, to the north. So we were saying we would develop to east and then west, and then finally, you can develop to the north. It's a good spot for long, long-term. And then, we're showing here the non-aeronautical land use area, and then a general aviation development that, if this airport continues to grow, um, it would be a prime spot for having, uh, an area to accommodate larger jets. And finally, the other study items that we looked at was a utility analysis. Um, what you're seeing in this top-right corner is the, uh, utility corridors, um, trying to preserve space for your future utilities to go in, so you don't, um, box in and make it more cumbersome and expensive to, uh, implement utility infrastructure in the future. So this is integrated with, uh, our development plan for the hangar layout. And then also the airport overlay district assessment. We did, um, a comprehensive assessment of the unadopted language of the Morgan County zoning ordinance, and, uh, presented that, um, to Morgan County, and have been working with, um, Pam Cherry and Steve, um, in terms of what, uh, Morgan County should work towards to protect the airspace of, uh, the Fort Morgan Airport. And finally, the project wrap-up. Where we are, um, really nearing the end of this project. Uh, what's remaining now is, um, uh, finalizing the capital improvement plan, and again, that's looking at, uh, capital dollars, using FAA funds over the next twenty years, and state funds and local funds to start chipping away at these projects incrementally to develop the airport, um, and then the final documentation of the entire master plan, which is expected sometime after the New Year. And that's it. Do, are there any questions?
Any questions?
I have like a hundred.
No, I'm just trying to wrap my mind around the... Alternatives analysis. So for the, so we know that everything that's in red, the upside-down red triangles are the, like, you know, the red flags, right? So, but, um, can you explain again, for those three that were in, that you included in the alternatives analysis, those are, like, those are just the focus items, right, that we're gonna be working on first?
Yeah, actually, so... The facility requirements can identify, uh, issues that don't need alternatives. Um, sometimes, like, for airspace protection, we don't have an alternative process that we would do for, um, how to, uh, create airspace protection. It's kind of more of just, it just happens. It just, um, zoning ordinance, language gets adopted. That can protect your zoning. Um, hangar storage, we didn't do an alternatives analysis for hangar storage, and, uh, although we did do a hangar layout, making, and that's because hangar, actual hangar, uh, development is based off of, um, individual demand. And so we can, at this airport, you already have actually, um, plenty of room to accommodate the future nine box hangars that we anticipated in the forecast, but we wanna, we show an overall long-range, um, configuration that can be completed. But in this master plan, we didn't do an analysis of a configuration this way or a configuration that way, and a lot of that's because it is into private demand that will drive hangar development. drive hangar development, and that development will likely take a different, will look differently than what we laid out, and that's okay.
Okay.
But, what we did do is the alternatives for those items, that we really needed to examine the different ways that we could accomplish the goal, and then determine the best one.
Okay. And that's why you just highlighted your, your preferred alternative?
Just those three.
Okay.
Well, I was fortunate enough to be a part of the airport advisory board and part of this committee, and I will say that Vern and a lot of the airport advisory committee, the FBO that was out there, spent a substantial amount of time going over this, along with their engineering firm, and this is a very well-put-together document. I think they touched on a lot of the needs and necessities for the future for our airport, and as we have gin for our economic development, that's all ties in, so I'd like to thank everybody on all the committees, Steve coming in, Kyle, don't want to get you, you're standing behind him. It was an effort collaborative with everybody, and I think this document is a good one.
Thank you, appreciate that. This has been a really great project for us, I appreciate it, being, having the opportunity to work on it.
And it's, what I like about it is, it's, it's simple to understand. This isn't, you know, I don't want to say it's not rocket science, since we're talking about flying, but, it's very, it's, it's simple, and it's, you know, you can look at it and understand, you know, the layperson can understand what we need to do, and sometimes some of master plans come in and you're going, you know, you don't understand. So, I appreciate the level of detail that you went into, and I appreciate the time. Dan and I were here a little bit earlier, so I appreciate you guys taking the time at the last minute to take us through a quick tour of the.
You bet. Thank you.
Just more questions?
Thanks for your effort.
You know, we've had a longstanding relationship with RS&amp;H. They came in and helped with the final design of the new airport, and they've come in and now helped with the master plan, and we've really appreciated their expertise. They do a lot of work at, at big airports, but they also do a lot of work at little airports, so they really understand the, I guess, the industry very well, and they bring that knowledge that is really helpful to us, so we appreciate them.
And I would just say, being a new guy that didn't know anything about airports, this has been great to have these folks behind me and helping me with many of the things that we do every day for the airport. They've been great to just call on. We're working on the CIP right now through the state, and they've been able to help with that, and this document really will help guide me and Fort Morgan Airport well beyond my career, and that's, that's a great feeling, so really appreciate their work.
Don't cut yourself short, you did a very exemplary job. With that, next item on the agenda is presentation and possible action on bids for airport engineering services. Mr. Gladmyer.
Well, this is a good segue, so we have a plan, and we've got things to build, so I guess it's time to go to work. So, what you have before you tonight, council, is a request to approve an proposal with RS&amp;H, a, an engineering firm out of the Denver area, to help us with design work over the next five years for the Fort Morgan Municipal Airport. Every five years, the city goes out to bid for engineering services at the airport, and we're at the end of our five-year contract with our current engineer, RS&amp;H. So, we did submit a request for qualifications and proposals out into the world. We got five proposals back. We had a lot of interest on this project. As you know, these five-year contracts are, are good contracts. It gives them, engineering firms, stability, and it gives the city stability on, on how we move projects forward. So, there was quite a little bit of interest, but we received five proposals back to review. I've listed those consultants, RS&amp;H, F&amp;D International, Olson Associates, Armstrong Consultants, and SEH. Staff did review those proposals based on specific criteria that we had in the RFQ, and against the FAA regulations and requirements as well. And after a pretty extensive review of those proposals, we are recommending that we would enter into contract with RS&amp;H for the next five years to perform engineering services at, at the airport, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
So, why is five years the, the golden number?
You know, that's a great question. I don't know the answer to, but that just seems to be the industry standard, that cities and counties that have airports and, and do these things, spend five years with their consultant, so.
And that's what the FAA recommends.
That's right. The FAA recommendation.
So, therefore, that's why, that's what we do.
Okay, cool.
They're the money behind it.
So, normally, our, our contracts, we look at, for these kinds of services, a three-year turnaround, but FAA's recommendation is five years, and, because most of the projects at the airport are several years in planning and development, I think that's why they go out for five years. So, that's a very good question.
Yeah, it's a great question.
I think the runway expansion was a lot longer than.
It was like a 20, 20-year process, I think.
That's why, I, under my breath, I said, sometimes decades.
And we have some long-range projects out there, as you know, based on the airport master plan, so.
Well, and one thing that we're seeing is a real big interest in, in additional development out at the airport right now. We've had new hangars built in the last several years, and we have more on the horizon, so it's growing, and it's a good sign.
And I do want to highlight that these, these contracts are proposal-based, they're not fee-based, and that, that is the FAA requirement, so we receive these, we review the proposals based on merit and qualifications and experience, and then we negotiate fees when we get into the contract, so you'll see a contract come before you that'll have a fee structure negotiated.
Well, and clearly, we just, in the previous actions, stated how much we, you know, appreciate the work that they've already, they're already doing, so, to me, it would be foolish to, you know, to go another direction, so, just my consent.
That's fair, and the other proposals were very good. I mean, we, we spent a lot of time reviewing those, and the consults put a lot of time into them, but at the end of the day, RS&amp;H rose to the top, so.
There are no other questions? I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I offer a resolution to accept Reynolds Smith &amp; Hells Incorporated as the airport engineers and authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with RS&amp;H to provide airport engineering services for the Fort Morgan Municipal Airport.
Second? I have a resolution by Allison Howe, and second by Christine Casto, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries on a unanimous vote of five to zero with council members Lindell and Anderson absent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Next, we have a presentation.
They're like, we're out of here.
Changing of the guards.
Shifting of the seats.
Next, we have a presentation and possible action on a resolution on the adoption of our gas rate study by McFadden Consulting. Mr. Nation, Mr. McFadden, and Mr. Barron, they didn't write you on there, but I'll include you.
We'll let Tony get things. Good evening, mayor and council. We're going to get into Mike McFadden's presentation here. Most of you are probably familiar with Mr. McFadden. He's been the city's rate consultant now for, well, some people say forever, but that's, you know, pretty close.
Couple of years.
Couple of years, is that right, Ron? So, yeah.
More than a couple.
So, really do appreciate, the one thing that I've learned in this position, and having worked with Tony in the department, and then with Mike through this process, rates consulting in natural gas is very complex. There's a lot that goes into it, and I've appreciated the ability to work with Mike. Tony deals with Mike on a, you know, a continual basis through the year to make sure our rates are at a position that we're not getting into situations that we're either over-recovered or under-recovered and everything with how we're operating. So, this year, we went ahead and did a, a full analysis of the entire natural gas fund, and there were some adjustments that came out of that. We brought that to your attention when we made public notice to our utility customers, and so, now I'm going to turn it over to Mike, and if we don't have to have Nelson come out here and get our security options cleared up.
I know he can hear us.
Oh, here he comes.
I whispered.
Had to delay long enough.
Which was probably really loud when I whispered, because he's got headphones on.
We, we love you, Nelson.
Like, what did you guys do? So, Brent, for the viewing public, what is bad about over or under recovering?
We get into a situation where a part of, and Mike will get into this a little bit, where we're just collecting money just to cover the gas that we're purchasing as a city, and so, that's, it's basically a pass-through cost, and we've, in the past, got into a situation where we over-recovered, which means we're collecting way more money than we need to spend as a city to purchase the gas. And it makes our gas reserves build and build and build, and you can get into a situation where the PUC will tell you that that's not acceptable, and you need to stay fair with your customers, and so, then it forces a major correction to make sure that we're basically giving some of it back and everything. And so, because of the complexity that goes into this type of analysis, when you get into weather forecasting and market forecasting and all that stuff, that's why we use somebody like Mike to keep up with those trends, so.
On that note, turning it over to.
I was just helping, I was just helping you dance while we were waiting.
I appreciate that.
There are some new faces here, so, I am Mike McFadden. Fort Morgan was my first client.
Aww. A little sweet.
So, I have a special place for Fort Morgan in my heart, and I have been doing the gas analysis since 1995, and, and we also did the electric analysis for, I don't know, 15, 20 years, in fact.
Sanitation once in a while, too, yeah, I was a part of that.
So, a little bit about my background, I worked for Public Service Company for 20 years, 15 of it in the rate department, where we dealt with all the regulatory matters. And then, five, two years, I went on a special project to see how the corporation provided services to subsidiary companies, and then, at the end of that period, I became basically the CFO for Western Gas Supply Company, which was the pipeline owned by Public Service that brought gas from the San Juan Basin up over the mountains, into the central mountains like Vale, and, and then over that, down into Boulder. And then, after three years on that, I went to work for a very large consulting firm. It's called Hagler-Bai Consulting, and I worked with them for about two years, a year and a half as an employee, and then I said, hey, I want to go out on my own, and they said, well, keep, we'll hire you as a contractor. So, I did that, and that was 1995, so, and it was Fort Morgan that called me and said, can you do a rate analysis? Ray Seeler.
Who's Ray Seeler?
So, don't be afraid to ask questions. This gas rate analysis is a little different than what we've done in the past. Usually, we do a gas supply analysis, a gas cost, the gas supply charge, and we do that usually annually. The base rate charge is the gas, what I call the gas distribution charges, and it recovers the city's operating maintenance expense in lieu of taxes, general fund. So, it's everything within the gas department, including what gets charged to the gas department. The gas supply charge recovers dollar for dollar the cost of getting the gas, buying the gas, and transporting it to the city gate. So, those costs are market-based, the gas commodity is market-based since about 1980, oh, 1997, somewhere in there, and the transportation rates are regulated by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. The city makes no, it takes no markup on that, on the gas supply charge. The gas distribution charges usually have to have two readings, but the gas supply charge, under the tariff that we implemented, I don't know, 15 years ago, it can be done And this is just a visual of what the rate structure is. The distribution charges, the on-end depreciation, lieu of taxes, capital projects, and there's two charges. There's a metering and billing charge, that's a flat monthly fee intended to recover the cost that would not vary depending on usage. So, it's billing, meter reading, that type of stuff. The delivery charge is simply the, the rest of the gas department's charges for operating and maintaining the pipes, and the meters, and everything else on the system. The gas supply charge, two parts. We forecast for the rates, what's going to happen in the next year, and, and as you know, there's one thing about forecasts, no matter what you forecast, it isn't going to be what you do. And, and so, what we do is, we true up the revenue that the city collected from the gas supply charge with the actual gas cost for that month, and any difference goes into a deferral account. It's either over-recovered or under-recovered, and then once a year, we try and true that So, we have two sets of rates here, so I just, I thought I'd give them to you all at the front end. The distribution charge, we didn't charge the, we didn't change the metering and billing charge, we just left it at $7.90 a month. The delivery charge is increasing by .04088 per CCF, and that recovers, those two items all recover the city's on-end cost for the gas. The gas supply charge is decreasing from 36.4 cents to 20.3 cents. The total, you'll, you'll notice that the, the metering and bill, or the delivery charge is going up, the gas supply charge is going down. The total change in gas revenue is 665,000 decrease, and it's 17.8% decrease in rates. So, now we're going to focus just on the distribution rates. It's going up 13.17%. Why? Well, there's a number of reasons why. The current distribution charges are outdated. The test year was June ending 2001. We have not changed those rates in, I don't know, I'm not good with numbers, 2001 to 2007, 16 years, see? And the proposed rates are based on June ending. We use June-ending test periods because it's the natural cycle for utility. Gas is way down in the summer, way up in the winter. You don't want to do it on a calendar-year basis, you want to get a total cycle in there. Operating expenses over that period of time have increased by 90, .93 million, or over Normalized sales have decreased from 6.1 million CCF to 5.6 million, or a deep, or a decrease of 9%. Meters increased from 52,000 to 54,000, 54,700. Meters increased from 52,000 to 54,000, 54,700, an increase of 4.38. Now, I'm saying that there, we did make a change to the distribution charges, I believe in 2012, to build in, in lieu of tax charges used to be based on the percent of revenue. We changed that to a per CCF. And in the electric department, we did it as a per KWH. But that was intended to be, and as far as I believe was, neutral. We just took the money we were going to collect as a percentage and divided it by the sale. So if you go back and look at changes in distribution charges, you will see the charge. Okay, the gas supply charge. See, November 1st, 1995, that's when it went into effect. Provides for the pass-through, and it contains the over and under recovery, and that was the initial rate analysis, based on the original rate analysis I did. Now, the changes in the gas supply, it's a decrease of 16.1 cents per CCF, which is approximately 892,000 and a little over 44% decrease. And the reason for those changes is, first, the gas supply charge, the analysis to change the gas supply charge has not been updated since July 1 of 2013. There's a number of reasons about that, and we'll get into it a little later. The purchased gas costs have decreased from 3.96 per MMBTU to $2.81. Transportation and storage costs have decreased from 68 to 60. And delivered cost of gas has decreased from 463 to 341. So the fact that we didn't do stuff for three years led to a deferred gas cost increase. We increased from an over recovery of approximately 363, 364,000 to 611,000. In this study, we're decreasing the increment from a negative 8.1 to a negative 11 cents. The fact that, over this period of time, there was falling rates, I think that the city's revenue looked good. And if you looked at the gas department's income statement, you would say it looked good. However, you also have to look at the balance sheet and see how much you owe in or either over or under recovered there. So I think there wasn't any real push because gas rates had come down and they were staying not to really look at it and say, we need to change the deferred. So managing the deferred is probably the key factor affecting rate stability in any gas or electric utility. You need to maintain the discipline to manage that deferred very closely. So here's the components. Forecasted in, gas cost increment, again, you've got to remember that this is, the forecasted increment is from 2013, was 44. The proposed deferred is 31 cents. The deferred increment is going up almost 3 cents. And the gas supply charge, the combination of both of those, is 16.1 cent decrease. Now, if everything in this study came out exactly as we said it would, a year from now, might be two years from now because of the size of the deferred, that gas cost increment better turn around to be zero, which means the rates are going to go up at the end of that period, just with the deferral, if it turns around. So what's the impact of these changes? Well, the average monthly bill residential goes down $7.27, $44, $45 for commercial, and the municipal accounts, $48. The winter bill, the average residential is going to be $30 less, the commercial is $60 less. Now, when you put that over, over the usage, you can see, you know, in the residential customers in the winter months are going to have savings of 90, 99, 71 over the three highest months. And you'll see that at the low end, it's going to be, you know, two bucks savings. Commercial customers, generally commercial customers, use the gas for the same thing. Cooling, heating. And so their slope looks the same. But again, $524 and $525 in the coldest month versus fourth or third. Now, I kind of wanted to show you how the industry has changed since, in the last few years, since we did this rate analysis. This is the proposed rate. You see, the gas cost is 37% of every dollar the gas department collects. 40% is for O and M. In lieu of taxes is 18%. And then what's going into the fund or the contribution is for capital is really 5%. When the current rates, based on October 1 of 2001, you can see the gas cost was 60%. That's because the rate, prices were so high. O and M was 28. Now, you've got to remember that 28 is the percent of the revenue. If we took out gas costs, you'd get a clearer picture of the controllable cost. But because gas costs are in there, it shows you the reason that there's always been a deferred gas cost is because it's such a large increment of your costs, and you have no control over. You can't go to Walmart and buy gas for your house, you know, so there's... So because this is two sets of rates, being the gas distribution rates, that has to be passed by ordinance and has to have two readings. And the gas supply charge can be approved by resolution. So I think the city's plan is to do both of those on December 5th. Is that right? That was the last one. I think December 5th is the next.
Yep.
Correct.
Yep.
The first reading's the next item.
Yeah, the first reading's going to be the next item. It'll actually be adopted fully on the 5th, so.
And as I recall, both to be effective with December 1 bill, after December 1 billings.
Yes.
Which, because of usage, is really November, October, November usage, a little in December.
So Mike, just a quick clarification, which I think is important when we talk about rates. Because gas is a commodity that fluctuates on a daily, sometimes hourly basis in the markets, we forecast based upon what we believe is our best guess of what that market's going to do. And so when we project out this one year, we're looking at that market, what it's done in the past, what we anticipate whether to do in the future, any, anything that we can tie into to make this work, so that when we get to the end of the test period, we've paid back everything that we've overcharged.
Right. And you bring up an excellent point that I probably should have put in here for the new members. All gas is purchased by Nebraska, sorry, National Public Gas, NPGA, National Public Gas Agency, of which the city, where it was previously a member on the gas side of the business, but now only uses them to purchase the gas. The NPGA contracts for gas at a flat price per month. So they aren't going into the market day in and day out like an electric utility would. And they don't know what the price is going to be because they can't schedule the gas until they know what the generating plant's going to need. So it's less complex in that sense. But again, you're paying a flat rate for the month, so there's a premium in there built in by the suppliers. At the end of the next month, they've already bid in for new ones. The city used to participate in Nebraska's levelized payment program, which was a method of trying to backstop the prices of gas. In my, over 40 years of experience, I've had to look at these programs by public utilities, cities, and everyone else. You pay a premium for that service. One, we did a huge, serves half the state of Ohio, and they had a program for 25 years. They about broke even, not quite, in one year, Katrina. So we had the data to look at. We were seeing that the city was paying $400,000, $500,000 a year to hedge gas prices. And, and we finally decided, the city decided to not get into Nebraska's. And I believe that's a big reason why the seven, if, what I called Nebraska, because they're the ones that do the forecasting, they said, we don't see much change from what's going on today. So what we had to do then is we had to kind of forecast what the gas was going to be coming in on CIG's three different source points, and we forecasted that price based on the gas prices stayed stable in those areas. So it was a little more complex, but I think the city was very smart in doing this. Now, if Katrina 2 comes in, well, really, the hurricanes didn't affect anything this year in the gas market, because the market has changed so much since then.
So if, we currently don't have a rate stabilization fund that has been earmarked at the city of Fort Morgan. We do have reserves. Does it make sense to have a rate stabilization fund as opposed to being into one of these programs?
I believe the least expensive rate stabilization program we put in in 1995, those rates change every month, and yet your rates do not. And the gas, the over and under recovery protects the customers and the city. The only people I know that probably make money in hedging is somebody that's selling the gas and is willing to, you know, get a price for the gas they own for the foreseeable future. But otherwise, you're just gambling. And you're paying a premium for it. So that, that would be my recommendation. And when I did a study for the state of Kansas, they were looking at retail wheeling. Every one of the large customers that bought electricity from the various places, they could have fixed their price. And they said, no, you're always better off. It's lower cost to go with the market price than it is to pay for an insurance program that you may never need. So that would be my recommendation.
Thank you.
Any other questions, or?
There are no questions. I would entertain a resolution adopting a gas rate study by McFadden Consulting.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution on adoption of the gas rate study by McFadden Consulting.
Second?
A resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Allison Howe, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next, as the council acting as the board of directors for our natural gas department and system enterprise fund of the city of Fort Morgan, we'll have a presentation on Mr. Nation and Mr. McFadden.
Just very briefly, since you've adopted the study, and I think Mike's answered all the questions about it, we're just looking forward to move forward with the resolution that you have in your packet adjusting the rates and the ordinance that will adjust the necessary rates via ordinance and have a public hearing on 5th of December.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution on first reading of ordinance number 1201, adjusting natural gas rates, and request to schedule a public hearing on the ordinance for December 5th.
Second?
A resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Christine Casto, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McFadden?
Thank you.
Goodbye. Drive careful. Next, we have a presentation of possible action on the acceptance of a rate study for the water fund. Mr. Nation?
Let me make sure I got the right folder out. Okay, good evening again. Fortunately or unfortunately, I won't have a nice presentation slideshow to go with this presentation. Just as a little bit of background, the city of Fort Morgan was under contract with the Farnsworth Group. They've switched names a couple of different times. Tom Olman used to be our water and sewer rates consultants. I know some of you are familiar with his work. We had a very good relationship with Tom. Tom also did the rates analysis for Morgan County Quality Water District and took care of ours at the same time. It was about this time last year that Tom passed away. And it was kind of a sudden thing. We knew he was retiring. We were hoping he was going to turn all of this over to somebody for one last analysis before our contract with the Farnsworth Group expired. But that wasn't the case. Brian Zick with the company was handed the account. We worked with Brian when we moved forward with this report that you have in front of you. It's also the same company that did the sewer report, so you'll see the name is similar and the story is similar. But Brian has now left Farnsworth Group. So we got the reports done, but Brian's no longer there and makes it kind of difficult to have him come back in or have somebody with the company come in and make a presentation on a study that they weren't familiar with. So told Jeff that I thought I would just go ahead and walk you guys through the reports, and we'll field your questions and go from there and go over the recommendations when we get to the end of it and everything. So these aren't full reports like we did see last time Tom did one. I think the water report alone was, you know, 80 pages. This is kind of a brief snapshot. Having sat down with both Tom and Brian, it's the same exact analysis. They use the same spreadsheets and all the same data goes into them. I had no doubt that we were getting the same type of results out of the analysis that was done. So even though it saves a lot of paper, it's, you know, it's still the same work, just a little less presentation that Tom would put into them. So a lot of the same thing goes into these, as Mike described, going into the gas part of it. You start out by looking at your revenue analysis, and when you look at the first couple of pages of the report, they break down the revenues that go into the water fund by looking at our different accounts that come in in city and our NISP money that we raise and that. Then, obviously, then looking at the water fund, the expenses, you start to pick up the different categories of O and M. And a lot of the projects that we start looking at, they break down the expenditures into general operation and maintenance expenditures, and then we start looking at capital items, large capital, minor capital. And we start meeting with our superintendents. When you deal with the water fund, you're dealing with Eric Segal and all the infrastructure we have in town. And then we deal with Al Conas out at the water plant itself. That's all incorporated into this. And so they each have their lists of things that they need to see fixed and things that are getting old. And so some of that stuff falls under minor capital, some of it does move up into the major capital type of categories. And so when Mr. Zick went through this, we had discussions on what type of things would we be seeing long-term in some of these categories. We did start to go ahead and start scheduling... We did start to go ahead and start scheduling some major funds towards possible expansion at the water plant. This last summer, I was in front of you talking about some of the constraints that we were seeing. We definitely want to make sure that we're prepared for any type of expansion into the future. So, we wanted to make sure that type of expenditure was showing up in the analysis. So, when we're setting rates, we're making sure that we, we capture that type of money. And then obviously, the big one that shows up when you get into page seven and eight of the report, we start talking about the NISP expenditures. The participants group was handed a new, basically, bond breakdown for the NISP project. It changed some of the ways that we were looking at in the past. In the past, we were looking at expenditures spread out over about a ten-to-fifteen-year period with major expenditures every year. Now that we're getting so close to needing to pull the trigger on this, they're basically decided that this is going to be a bonded project with basically four major bonds. We're getting rid of all the intermediate years. The price hasn't changed, except for the escalation due to, you know, taking so long. But that, it's just, we'll be looking at taking out bonding in four periods instead of a ten-to-fifteen-year type of bond increments. And so, Brian adjusted those in the, in the graphs. And so, like, if you go to page nine, you can see that debt service that is shown in the different colors there. We've got two bonds or two sets of financing that are still associated with the current project. One of those has, I think, two payments left on it, and it'll be paid off. And then we'll have the financing that was just redone last year? Was that last year that we did that, Jeff?
Two years ago.
Yeah, two years, two years ago now. And so, that graph shows all the different types of bond financing and payments that we have to make to pay off all the capital expenditures with the water fund. So, the next pages of the report just go into cash flow projections, you know, starting to balance out what we'd be bringing in, what we would be looking at expenditures. And then the big one is you start looking at the graph that's on page twelve. That's the, that's the cash, cash flow projection for the water fund. Don't let it, you know, scare you that, what is that, 2020? All of a sudden, it looks like we have almost forty-five million dollars. But you have to understand that that shows the money for the bond coming in and then immediately going out. And so, that cash flow jumps up and down dramatically during the life of NISP. Generally speaking, we've got a lot of conservative portions of this analysis in there. We want to make sure that the fund is, you know, safely being, you know, funded for these possible projects. But then, we've also got other things that we can look at that could start saving and shaving off some of the need for cash in the future. We're starting to have discussions with the NISP financial group about what type of funding we would see with NISP, what type of bond rates. These assume a certain bond rate that they hope is a conservative number. They're hoping that we'll get a much better bond percentage when we go out on the market. And so, there's a lot of conservative approach in here. So, what we're shooting for will hopefully be, you know, set, and we're not shooting ourselves in the foot, basically. And so, you kind of look through that. The, you know, summary version of the report for next year is that he's, he's recommending a three percent increase in the, in the water rates to keep us moving forward towards what we're projecting that we're going to need over the next ten-to-fifteen years, depending on, you know, how NISP plays out. Remembering that there's still a lot that's coming into play with NISP and how we're going to finance things and, and just the total project cost. We, since Farnsworth, I didn't even receive an email from Farnsworth about if anybody was going to help with our account once Brian left. And so, we were in the process of choosing new rates consultants anyway. And so, it kind of solidified my decision that we would probably be choosing a different company next year to help us. I think it's time to have a fresh set of eyes looking at this, going into these type of major decisions. Because this, this fund in particular has a lot with it. It's got a lot of debt against it, obviously being our only fund that has debt against it at the city. But then it has a lot of expenditures coming up in the future. And so, I think next year, we'll take a fresh eyes approach to this and try to solidify the future numbers with NISP in it while we're still just in that design stage of, of the, of the planning. And so, but with that, the last couple of pages, he did a analysis just to show that, Tom always did a comparison of where our average residential rate is. And it's, it's still towards the top of the, the pack. It always has been. He, you know, makes a comment that as NISP comes in, a lot of these other communities will probably start catching up with us a little bit. But I always do believe that it's, we pay for high-quality water, and that's what we're getting. And so, but with that, like I said, the main offtake of this is that it's a, he's recommending a three percent increase for the 2018 water rates. And so, that's kind of it in a nutshell. And I'd be happy to try to answer questions.
So, you're going to go after a rate engineering firm this year?
We already did. We were in the middle of the process, trying to get Farnsworth to get their product done before we made a selection. And I think it was part of why Brian was taking such a long time to get me a final product was, I think he was getting ready to leave. Not knowing that for sure, but I think. So, we already had five or six proposals to review. And myself and the other water staff had reviewed them. And we had a recommendation that we were holding off on. At this point, I'll probably be bringing that back to you at the next meeting. So.
In addition to this, we've been working, as Brent pointed out, with some financial consultants with Northern to identify where we're going to be at in the bond rating process moving forward. And that'll probably be a separate presentation that we bring to you. But, you know, when you look at these rates, they're all based upon what we need today and what we anticipate we're going to need tomorrow. And we have some pretty good projections on what our capital needs are going to be. This is a lot easier than dealing with a gas or electric fund, because we can tell you, this is what water is going to cost with this project. This is what it costs for us to provide this water. So, we don't have this under-over-recovery concept. We know this is a cost basis analysis of what we think it's going to and what we're pretty sure we know it's going to cost to replace parts of the system and everything else. So, when we look at that three percent increase, you know, the good news is we haven't done increases for the last three years. And we did that intentionally, knowing that at some point, we're going to have to start ramping the rates back up to start bringing in the capital and the cash flow we need so that when NISP is constructed, we can pay for it. And so, it is something that we absolutely need. And I'm really glad that Brent pointed out on that cash flow chart, we have been following the direction of council and putting cash away so that we can be financially prepared when we go out to bond. And cash is king, what we've been told in the rating agencies. And right now, you know, that's our, our goal. And we've been doing that continuously for the last several years. And it's, we're looking pretty good from that perspective. But we have to increase rates to keep up with it. I think we prefer a three percent raise every now and then as opposed to a double-digit raise in a year that something gets constructed. It's easier to, to manage in your own personal budget.
So, Tom, at one time, when he was still doing them, was projecting a potential five percent annual increase for a while?
There was there for a while, but his last report had like a two percent in there. And there was a couple of twos, and then it jumped up to like a five. And so, this is a couple of years where the threes in a row.
Are you questions, Brent?
Good job pulling it together.
Thank you. I, you know, I had a lot of help. This is, this takes a lot of data when they request it. And between Jeannie and Chris and the finance department, and then Al and Eric and Colette and everybody in the office, it's, it's definitely, these things are a group effort when it comes to putting them together.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution accepting the rate study for the water fund.
Second?
A resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Christine Casto, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next, we have a presentation of possible action adjusting water rates. Mr. Nation?
So, yes, so we've talked about the need to adjust it. And what you have in front of you is a, a resolution. This is just a resolution process that we go through with water and sewer. It doesn't require multiple readings and ordinances and everything. So, a little bit smoother. I did want to point out, when you look at exhibit A that is on your resolution, there are two changes to that chart that haven't been in there before that I wanted to point out. Everything else just increased by the three percent. But we needed to add in the, when you go about three-quarters of the way down the page, there's now a price line item for the ditch water for the golf course. And we're initially setting that at about eighty-two cents. That'll be one thing that the new consultants will look at and dig into the analysis that we did in office to see where we're at and if there needs to be an adjustment made to that. But that's the, the price we'll go ahead and institute for now. And then the other one is the last, right before it says outside city limits, there's now a hydrant category that we want to call hydrant no meter, under two thousand gallons. And that is just a single charge rate of twenty-five dollars that we want to be able to have. And what we found out for the last year, almost two years now, we have a lot of just individual truck fills that come in. And we don't mind just hooking them up to the hydrant outside the electric building and giving them, you know, five hundred gallons of water or filling the tank up twice and giving them a thousand gallons of water. But the way that our system has been set up, we've told them, "You got to check out a hydrant meter, and we've got to track how much water you use. And then you got to come back and pay your bill." And these guys are usually just in town for a day. And we've made this process so complicated that a lot of them just get, you know, fed up and go get it from quality water or someplace. And so, talking it over with staff, we felt that if we had just this non-meter charge that we knew that these were just guys that just needed a couple of small tanker loads for a boring job that they have for CenturyLink or Charter, they can just come, pay the one-time charge for that job of twenty-five dollars. It covers the cost of the water and the time for the guy to walk out there and let him hook up and turn the hydrant on. So, but something that the water department really felt that we needed to have. So, we've added that to that, that rate schedule that's on exhibit A.
So, on average, what is the impact to the average consumer in, in their bill?
Uh, in their build?
I mean, I know that's.
Yeah.
It's upon your water usage, but, I mean, are we talking?
Average increase, I tried to highlight that in here. Yeah, so it'll, the average water bill next year would be seventy-three dollars and ninety cents. Which is up from seventy-one ninety, I think, is what, if I'm reading this right.
Thirty dollars.
So, yeah.
Okay.
So, a couple, a couple bucks a month, so.
Any other questions for Brent?
Sure.
Saying I would entertain a resolution accepting the rates.
Your honor, I would offer a resolution accepting the, adjusting the water rates. I'm sorry, I was reading the wrong line.
Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Christine Casto, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next, we have a presentation of possible action on acceptance of a rate study for sewer fund.
Yes, once again, so, very, the same story as the water fund. This is another report by Brian Zick with Farnsworth Group. The sewer analysis is very much identical when you just walk through the report of what the water fund looks like. The one major glaring difference and nice difference with the sewer fund is we no longer have any debt against it. It's debt-free at this time, which is always a nice, nice thing. Typical increase in operating expenses. The one thing we kind of see with the sewer fund, and we've, you know, we talk about this internally sometimes, is, you know, we're not adding a lot of real big customers on there by any means. But, so, we're not getting a lot of growth in the sewer fund. But you get a little bit and everything. So, same type of capital analysis when we look. This is Eric Segal with everything in, in town, and now Skip Kaiser running the plant out there. And we start looking at those, what type of capital projects that we need to be looking at. So, those guys start putting together their lists. The big one that kind of creeps into this report, and we've, we kind of slid it out a ways several years into the future, but we know that it's coming, is we're going to have to start doing a, once we do get a new discharge permit, and, you know, I'm hoping sometime in the next year or two, we will see it. But we've, we've been basically operating for two years now on an expired permit. And that's just the health department. They just sent us a letter that just says, "We realize that it's expired, but please continue to operate basically under the last permit that you had." We keep hearing that they're going to issue permits for the South Platte Basin all at once. And that'll either be in 2018 or 2019. And so, we should be seeing a new permit. When that gets handed down, there's probably going to be the initial conversation about what type of phosphorus regulations that we're going to have. And I think we've tried to bring that to your attention before, that we have no way of treating for phosphorus. It's something that our plant wasn't designed for. And so, the initial conversations that the health department handed down sounds like it's not going to be something they're going to just mandate right away. But we may have like a ten-year window to start to prepare. So, we put some five-year projections in there and started doing some major capital on design and, and things like that. So, when you look at this report, you start to see an uptick in the five-year expenditure window. And that's to go along with some of that. So, we wanted to make sure that we had rates set at a place to where, when we get into that situation and we start designing and then start having to look at making changes in facility that we've got adequate cash to start making those, those changes or at least start through the process. So, same thing, the, the cash flow projection chart is on page eight. And you can see there that, you know, the sewer fund has got a pretty good cash reserve in it right now. And with the rate projection that he has right now, we're trying to maintain that with that little bit of a, or fairly substantial downturn then in a few years and then balancing after that. So, so this report, like the last one, is concluding with the request for a three percent increase in 2018 to keep us on track with that. Like I indicated with the water, we try to be very conservative and not necessarily call this a worst-case scenario. But we want to make sure that we're putting in as much expense, you know, versus the revenue that we're getting to our, we know we've got room to work within this and use the monies that we're capturing. So, with that, it's the same thing. Unlike the water, when you look at our comparable rates with the other communities in here, this is more of a middle-of-the-pack type of rate, just because we don't have as much debt or did not have as much debt with this fund. And so, our sewer rates are very much middle-of-the-pack when you look at the analysis. And so, so with that, I'll keep that one short. Any questions?
Obvious question. So, for the average consumer, what is the, sorry? You should have seen that one coming.
I should have seen it coming.
Because you know that's what they're going to want to know.
Yep.
I'm doing math over here to see how we balanced out.
Well, and that's it. He didn't provide that exact number in this report, but it's, his modified monthly rate went up to basically thirty-two dollars. And so, it would be three percent of that.
So, proxy, once again, it's.
A buck a month, less than that.
So, we're still way above breaking even between gas?
Yeah.
That's what it all comes down to ultimately.
Yes.
We're going in the right direction.
Yes.
We're staying in the right direction.
Yeah. And this, and these are tough things to bring. I mean, it's nice to bring in the decreases when they're there and they make sense and everything. The increases are tough. I mean, we as staff, when we sit down and, you know, bring Jeannie and Jeff into the conversation finally once the preliminary reports are done, it's not, I mean, we don't do this because we want the citizens to be strapped. But we do this to. do this because we want the citizens to be strapped, but we do this to make sure that our enterprise funds are able to provide the service, and that's what we're aiming for.
Well, and I think what is really good about what we do is we don't, we don't do the roller coaster stuff, the up and down. You know, we have gradual increases when we need to, and they're not the 15% because we didn't do good rate studies, you know? So, while we may have those balances up in here, they're, they're much more palatable. And, you know, and all of the council members and the staff, we're all paying the same rates as everybody else out there, so we don't take it lightly when we have to raise rates, you know, because we are rate payers as well.
You know, I think another interesting aspect goes along with what Brent said is that these are really enterprises as, they're businesses. Their run is a business. We have to make sure that we keep that business solvent for the benefit of all of those people who use the service. And, you know, we know of communities that just kind of blow it off and don't want to look at it as a business and look at it from a political perspective, that it's not popular to make rate increases. It's not popular to adjust your revenue requirements for the service. And over several years of not paying attention to that, we've seen, and currently see, small communities that we know of that are struggling in all of their utilities because they've misused those funds and they weren't used and managed like a business. And so, we take a very business approach to this. It's always been council's direction, that we treat it like a business, and that we bring accurate and fair analysis to the council to make these decisions. And so, I agree with Lisa, we don't take it lightly, because pretty much everybody in this room is paying one of those bills, so.
With that, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution on accepting of the rate study for the sewer fund.
Second.
Have a resolution by Christine Casto and a second by Dan Marler. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
And now we're going to go into the public hearing portion of the meeting.
Presentation and possible action on adjusting sewer rates. Mr. Nation, the final, Brent.
Yeah, this is the final one I have. Very simple, this is just to go ahead and adopt the 3%. There isn't any changes to that Exhibit A. That is strictly just a 3% across the board to every rate that we, that we charge in the past. And so, no additional information needed on that one.
I didn't ask on the water or the sewer rates, because we had talked about it on the gas rates, but these will be effective-
These will be effective the first billing into the new year.
January.
The gas one will start in December, but these will be for the new year.
Okay.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution adjusting the sewer rates.
Second.
Resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Christine Casto. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brent.
Next on our agenda is a public hearing for an ordinance number 1197, amending certain portions of Chapter 20 of the municipal code concerning land use and sign codes. This is a public hearing. Please keep public comment to the issues before the City Council. Each speaker is asked to limit the comment time to three minutes unless the speaker represents a group of citizens, in which event additional time may be allotted. Please respect these limitations. I reserve the right to limit public comment to the, that is inappropriate under these guidelines and otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questions that are repetitive, cumulative, or argumentative, or not pertinent to the issues, and to set a limit on the duration of testimony if I determine it to be necessary in light of the number of people who've signed up to testify. First is the issue of legal notice. Mr. Brennan, has the hearing been properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, a legal notice of this public hearing and the content of the ordinance appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on November 10th.
Next, we have a presentation of the ordinance, Mr. Glenn Meyer.
A very brief presentation. Good evening. I think I articulated these changes quite well at the first reading, and so I would be happy to answer any questions you might have on the issue.
Not tonight.
Very good, thank you very much.
Next, we'll hear public comments. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on the issue? Seeing none. If there is anyone else in the public who wishes to speak on this issue, I would ask the city clerk, were there any oral or written comments submitted to your office?
No, Your Honor.
Does council have any council discussion or questions? If there is no further discussion by council, I would entertain a motion to close the, or continue the public hearing.
Your Honor, I would offer a motion to close the public hearing.
Go ahead.
Who's that?
It's Lisa.
Motion by Christine Casto and a second by Allison Howe. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counsel action.
So, if council would like to move forward with this, and it's the best interest of the community, vote yes. If not, vote no. You can always continue this if you'd like to do it again later.
Thank you.
We're good.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution on second reading of ordinance number 1197, amending the land use codes and authorization to publish by title only.
Second.
A resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Christine Casto. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Your Honor, I would ask Jason's opinion on this, the attorney's opinion on this, but I know we have several of these tonight, and I imagine that the opening comments would be valid for every one of them, and it would be sufficient to say same rules as the last one and refer it on the record. Would that be appropriate?
Yes, I believe so, unless council really wants to hear it again.
I think Ron wants to breathe there.
I was going to do it without ask.
I was just trying to-
For your legal advice.
Trying to help you out.
I hate hearing myself talk. Next on the agenda is a public hearing on an ordinance number 1198, amending Chapter 21, Article 4 of the Fort Morgan Municipal Code concerning the National Electric Code and International Energy Conservation Code. This is a public hearing, and the same rules will apply as the last public hearing. First is the issue of legal notice. Mr. Brennan, has it been properly noticed?
That is also the same, Your Honor.
Okay.
November 10th.
Thank you. Next is a presentation of the ordinance, Mr. Kirkendall.
It's coming, he's coming.
Thank you, Mike.
Same as when I presented it, but I did have one input today from a local contractor that was real happy that the council was considering postponing the adotment of the energy code, because that was in a project that he's thinking of doing. He can get it in there and going before we have any concerns with the new energy code, excuse me, energy code. So, other than that, I haven't heard anything else, unless you have any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Kirkendall? Seeing none. Next, we'll hear public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this?
No public.
Seeing none. If there is no one else wishes to speak, I would ask the city clerk, have there been any oral or written comments submitted to your office prior to the hearing?
No, Your Honor.
Will now proceed to council discussion. Does anybody have any discussion? If there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Your Honor, I would offer a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion by Christine Casto, a second by Allison Howe. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Legal action, Mr. Myers.
So, the same criteria applies to the last public hearing?
You're going to use that one too, I see. Very well. I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution adopting ordinance 1198, Chapter 21, Article 4 of the Fort Morgan Municipal Code concerning the National Electrical Code and the International Energy Conserv Code.
And authorization?
An authorization for published by title only.
Second.
Have a resolution by Christine Casto and a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next on the agenda is a public hearing on ordinance 1199, amending portions of the Fort Morgan Municipal Code concerning imprisonment as a punishment. Once again, this is a public hearing, and the same rules apply as the previous two. First is the issue of legal notice. Mr. Brennan, has it been properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, on November 10th.
Next is a presentation of the ordinance by Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Your Honor. We spent substantial time discussing this upon first reading, and nothing has changed in the proposed ordinance since that discussion. And unless there are any further questions about the ordinance-
And importantly, the state legislature's out of session, so they haven't made any changes to state law either.
Very important, very important. So, at this point, it's still our recommendation to proceed forward with the ordinance as it was presented at last meeting, and then now on second reading.
Okay. Next, we'll hear public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to speak? Seeing none. I would ask the city clerk if any oral or written comments were submitted to the clerk's office prior to this hearing?
No, Your Honor.
Now, we'll proceed to council discussion. Is there any further discussion with council? Seeing none, we'll move to a motion to close the public hearing.
Your Honor, I would offer a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, second.
Second.
Don't hang people. Who is that? Lisa?
Lisa, yeah.
Have a motion by Christine Casto, a second by Lisa Northrup. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Counsel action, Mr. Myers.
And it's the same legal criteria for your consideration as the previous two.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution on the second reading of ordinance number 1199, eliminating jail as a possible penalty in Fort Morgan Municipal Court cases and authorizing to publish by title only.
Second.
Have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Lisa Northrup. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Guess what's next? Next on the agenda is a public hearing on ordinance 1200, the annual appropriation ordinance, and ordinance levying a tax upon the taxable properties in the city of Fort Morgan, Colorado, and appropriating monies to several funds of said city. Once again, this is a public hearing, same rules apply as the previous number. First is the issue of legal notice. Mr. Brennan, was this hearing properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, also on November 10th.
Thank you. Next is presentation of the ordinance, Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, we're pleased to present to City Council the ordinance adopting the 2018 budget. A lot of time and effort went in on that. Want to thank everybody for their participation and hard work to get that done. Nothing's changed since the first reading, except for the Strictly for Streets tax did pass, and the budget's been modified to reflect that additional revenue and expense.
That's kind of a big thing, a big change.
That is a big thing. That's a huge thing. So, I don't want, you know, I know we want to rush this along, but that is a big thing. So, really appreciate all the help from everybody to get that done.
Yes.
Is a good thing. Next, we'll hear public comment. I would ask the city clerk, is there any oral or written comments submitted to your office prior to this hearing?
No, Your Honor.
Council discussion, is there any discussion with council?
I think, once again, you know, it's great how productive and how quickly we get through our budget, but my only comment would be to the constituents in the city of Fort Morgan for putting their confidence in our departments and going out into the polls and voting to pass Strictly for Streets and provide us with the opportunity to give them the streets that everybody deserves. So, thank you.
Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Your Honor, I would offer a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion by Christine Casto and a second by Lisa Northrup. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counsel action, Mr. Myers.
All right, so, again, it's the same criteria. I would add two additional items to this, because we have changed on second reading. Between first and second reading, we can't publish this by title only, so that is one difference to consider. And also, state statute requires you to have an adopted budget, so we strongly encourage you to approve this.
Thank you for your legal advice.
With that dire comment from the city attorney, would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution on the second reading of ordinance number 1200, adopting the 2018 budget, setting the mill levy, and appropriating monies to the various funds within the city of Fort Morgan.
Second.
Have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Christine Casto. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Hey, the consent agenda.
I would like to put in my two cents, I might have all the public hearings be second reading.
And we just have to make sure we publish them by title only. Physically sound.
Yes.
Makes it easy when they spend time prior to approving. Next is the consent agenda. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight's consent agenda includes Item A, approval of the disbursements and payroll for October, and Item B, approval of the minutes of the November 7th, 2017 City Council regular meeting. All matters on the consent agenda are considered routine business by the council, and it will be enacted with a single motion and a single vote by roll call. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is deemed necessary, that item should be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
I would entertain a resolution accepting the consent agenda as presented.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion by, or a resolution by Christine Casto and a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is public comment. We had one earlier. Is anybody else in the audience? Seeing none, we will move to reports by officials and staff.
Very good, Your Honor. I'll see if there's anybody before I go that has any announcements for council. Brent?
On a sewer project, we've been working on a lining project over in the Cove Lane Gateway Avenue area on the south side of the tracks. The residents have been very cooperative with that process. We ran into a situation today where we had the wrong size of sleeve for the sewer line ordered, and so, we're going to have a little bit of a delay. Nothing changes with them being able to use their facilities in their houses, but we're going to have guys come back and in their backyards and everything again. And we were hoping that we would get this all done. So, if anybody gets any phone calls upset about that, we apologize for that. That was just a little bit of an oversight on our part and their part when we were doing this project. This is a very exciting project. When we're done, I will bring back the sewer department to explain what we've done over there and show you the results that we're getting. Extraordinary. Very impressed with the product that we're getting.
getting and what it's doing for our system. I think it's something that will definitely be something to spend more money on in the future to extend the life of our sewer system. Very neat technology. But we'll get this project finished up and then bring back a little demonstration for you and show you how it works and everything, so.
Is this slip lining?
Yeah, it is. It's a little more than that. It's... Yeah, it's pretty cool with little robots and everything involved. It's... Yeah, it's neat.
Little robots.
So...
Will it wrap up before the holidays, or will it be after the holidays?
Yes, it should be all done in December. It won't be done before Thanksgiving, but it'll be done before Christmas. So...
Perfect.
Very good. Was there anybody else? So a couple things really important for council and the community. We've had a couple of snafus in utility billing related to people using our Express Bill Pay. The reality... Or the situation is that Express Bill Pay works great, but when you search it on Google or a search engine, people can pay to put in advertising that has similar names to Express Bill Pay. And we've had a customer click on the ad, put in their credit card number. What this company does is it takes your credit card number and then issues a check to the city. So they put in all their information. It wasn't a scam necessarily, other than they paid 3%, which we don't charge for people to use their credit card to pay their bills. And on top of being charged 3%, then the check that was issued to the city came in late. They got a late notice that they were going to get shut off. So we'll put out some more information to the press about this to get the word out. But the best way to get to the website, and it is the best way to pay, I think, using Express Bill Pay, but it... Just go to www.xpressbillpay.com. I think the one that this person got mixed up on was Express Next Credit Card Payments. And it's a whole different company, a whole different thing. So make sure you're on expressbillpay.com when you do that. Next thing...
Do we have a link on...
The website?
If you go to the city of Fort Morgan website, do we have a link to the proper place?
We should. We should. Yeah, you can get to it from our website, yes.
And it's what's in... And it's also what's written on the bill, correct?
It's also what's written on the bill, yes. Because we don't want our customers to have to go through that mess. And we finally got the check, and so anyways. The other thing, we had the ribbon cutting at the skate park. It's already getting a lot of use. I know it's safer than our old skate park, which will be decommissioned here before the end of the year. And I don't know how much safer it is. I, you know, just walking on it out there is pretty interesting today.
My dog couldn't climb up the slopes.
And you're a smart dog.
Yeah. But I know it's heavily used right now. A lot of kids going down there and using it. So it's a great amenity. And we're very, very happy to have that new skate park. And I know so are a lot of the kids in the community. And I think it's making that park much more used from what it used to be, which is what we wanted. The other thing, if you go by Optimus Park, which is another park that hasn't been used substantially in the past since soccer has grown, our soccer program has grown, you'll see the footings and the pipes and everything ready, and not just the footers. I mean, you've got... They've got the pore in, and they're tightening that pore down as they're supposed to, to make sure the concrete doesn't crack long term. But we will have official-sized pickleball courts and tennis courts in that park shortly. Some other upgrades that we put into the park is we paved the parking lot, which has made it look really nice and will extend the life of that parking lot. And we also stubbed in water and sewer for future pads to put... Bring in our portable bathroom. So some really good upgrades to our local parks. And, you know, the long-term goal is to decommission the skate park and put it on the tax rolls. Overall, a win-win, I think, for the community, since the sale of that property is going to fund a majority of the other two amenities that we've been able to construct new. So I think that goes well. And then, of course, the last thing, we've already talked about this, but want to thank everybody who participated in the committee for Strictly on Streets, staff, citizens. It was a huge success. I think going into this, we were concerned, not sure if it would pass or not, concerned what we would have to be doing in the budget long term, cutting services. And at this point, we won't have to cut services in order to move forward with the project. And I want to thank Steve and his team. I know they're working right now for a presentation. We'll bring to council after the first year, the five-year plan. They'll be coordinated with Brent's departments to make sure that we're doing everything as efficiently and effectively as we can around our utilities. So we've got a good team, a good outcome. I want to thank everybody that voted yes on that. And even if you voted no, I'm just glad you voted, but glad more people voted yes.
No.
And that's... Does council have any questions that we can answer? All right.
We're on no question kind of a night.
Yeah. It's the end of the year.
Well, I hope everybody has a safe and happy Turkey Day. Bids, meetings, and announcements. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, your honor. There are a couple of bids out right now. The city is accepting sealed bids for janitorial services until 4:00 p.m. on November 29th, and sealed bids for the purchase of a rescue fire truck until 2:45 p.m. on December 8th. On the calendar of meetings, all city offices will be closed Thursday for Thanksgiving and also Friday for the mayor's day off. Thank you, mayor and council. The Museum Heritage Foundation will meet on November 30th at 4:00 p.m. in the museum community room. And the next city council regular meeting will be December 5th here at 6:00 p.m. Under a couple of news releases issued very recently that were in your table files, the city has earned a national award for its National Night Out event that was held in conjunction with one of the second city party in the park event, and was one of eight communities across the country to be designated for Rookie of the Year recognition by the organization that sponsors National Night Out. That's a great honor. Adult pickleball will start indoors on November 27th at the Green Acres School Gym for adults 18 and over. It'll be kind of an open gym set up on Mondays and Thursdays from 4:30 to 8:30. And the museum will be doing a grandfather's trunk program with artifacts from the museum brought to the senior center on November 29th. And information on all those programs are on the website.
That's it? With no other business before the council, meetings adjourned.